I'd like to call the order of the July 1st, 2014, of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. Bless you. For our regular session, invite you to stand if you wish, as Commissioner Rick Williams leads us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance following.
Join me, please. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this another day that you've given us, the blessings that you've bestowed upon us. We ask that you be with us in this meeting, lead and guide and direct us as we contemplate the business of the city. May everything that we do and say be in accordance with thy will. All this we ask in Jesus' name, for his precious and holy sake. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would remind those watching at home, if you're interested in providing the invocation, please contact someone on the Commission or Ms. Schaller at City Hall, and we'll make arrangements for you to be there. Ms. Schaller, please call the roll.
Williams?
Here.
Sorry, that was Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Dunning?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip?
Yes.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
Have some awards and recognitions tonight, Mr. DeFebbo. I think Ms. Alexiev, who I called out last time unexpectedly, is here with us tonight. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioners. One of the things that Operation Pride does, that we really enjoy doing, is recognizing individuals, whether they're residential owners, or whether they're commercial property owners, or even neighborhood organizations, is recognizing them when they do things that really benefit the whole community, and they make quite an effort to improve their property or their neighborhood in some way. And so, we try to recognize from time to time those individuals. And this month, our commercial award winner is Gary Force Honda, and Tim Canely is here to accept the award. We are recognizing Gary Force Honda for a project they started in 2011 with the addition, renovation, and...
Well, we added to the property.
Yes.
So, we had an addition, we had a renovation, and we also added to our property.
So, and the initial part of that was $950,000, I believe, investment, and the one that you're just finishing now, or in the middle of, which is the comp fuel, is $150,000. So, it started in 2011, and it's just about to get finished, and we just really wanted to commend them on the visual benefit that is to Bowling Green, and thank you very much.
Mr. Canely?
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to make some comments? I know advertising is very expensive. We give you 60 seconds here.
No, I just want to thank you all for this award, and thank you guys for the service that everybody here does for our community, because I know that you're giving up your personal time to serve us and make sure that we're going in the right direction. So, thanks to everybody, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Canely. Thank you for your investment in our community and the jobs you provide.
All right. Thank you all.
All right. Does anyone else have any awards or recognitions they'd like to make? I would like to do two, if you don't mind. Joining us tonight is Nathaniel Burris from Boy Scout Troop 705, and Holy Spirit has joined us tonight. Thank you for being here, Nathaniel. And I'd also like to recognize Dave Tatman, the retired plant manager for the Corvette Assembly Plant. He has just been named Executive Director of a new organization called the Kentucky Automotive Industry Association, and will be promoting the automotive industry throughout the nation and the world, and starts right here in Bowling Green. So, congratulations, Dave. Mr. DeFebbo, for your comments, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There'll be a need for an executive session. Kate will read the reason.
Pursuant to CARA 61810C, for discussions of proposed repentiary litigation against your on behalf of the city.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Any other comments, sir?
No, no mayor.
Then approval in minutes for the regular meeting on June 17th, 2014.
So move.
Motion by Dunning, second by Williams. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
I'll excuse myself, since I was not here.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
We do have a time for public comments, if anyone is here to make a comment about something not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no one, we'll move to the second reading of Ordinance BG 2014-17.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving Amendment Number Four to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2014.
So move.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of Ordinance BG 2014-18.
Ordinance renaming street. Ordinance approving the renaming of Trey Court to Nell O'Brien Court.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
And second reading of Ordinance BG 2014-19.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.92 acre from RS1A, single-family residential, to OPC, office and professional commercial, located at 1623 Scottsville Road, presently owned by Tom and Portia Pennington.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-130.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of Greg Gaye to the Bowling Green Warren County Historic Preservation Board.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. This is my recommendation to fill appointment on the Historic Preservation Board. Greg Gaye has been involved in real estate and financing homes and historic homes, and has demonstrated his interest in that matter. Anybody have any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-131.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Joshua D. Hankins to the position of Environmental Compliance Coordinator in the Public Works Department.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbo.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a recent opening in the Environmental Division of our Public Works Department. We went out to public solicitation, received 23 applications for a repurposed title. It used to be called hydrologist, now it's called environmental compliance coordinator. From that process, we were able to distill down to Mr. Hankins, who has both a college degree, as well as an engineering degree, and nine years of experience in environmental compliance. So, we feel fortunate to have a person of this quality. I believe he is here to accept your accolades.
Mr. Hankins, it's time to stand up, so we can everybody see who you are. Thank you for being here, appreciate your interest in the job. Congratulations. Any other discussion, comments? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-132.
Municipal Order authorizing continuation of coverage by Symetra Life Insurance Company relating to managed healthcare and specific stop-loss excess insurance for fiscal year 2015.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbo.
The city is self-insured for health insurance for its employees. As part of that strategy, we buy what is known as excess insurance. We're here tonight to ask you to approve a contract for stop-loss or excess insurance for 2015. Given the increase from last year, I think it'd be appropriate for Michael Grubbs to provide a very short overview of why and how this will help us.
Mr. Grubbs.
Good evening. As Mr. DeFebbo said, we were faced with a significant increase this year. We, since they're no longer allowed to have maximum lifetime limits or annual limits on costs, it's potential for any employer, if they have a high claimant, to have some significant increases, and we have one claimant due to their medical condition costing over half a million dollars a year. Because of that, it was very difficult to get rates, competitive rates, from insurance companies that weren't willing to separate out or laser that individual and say, fine, we'll give you a lower premium for everybody else, but for this person, you're going to pay their claims until they reach a certain number. Symetra has provided us with insurance coverage for several years. Each year, Cheryl Morgan, our insurance broker, goes out, gets quotes for us, helps us get the best possible bid. This year, the best they could do for us is a 51% increase with Symetra. Symetra will not be separating out this one individual. They'll be covered just like every other person on our plan, whereas all the other bids would have separated that individual out, and we would have had to pay their claims more. So, while it is a big increase, at least we know what the final number is. If we had to pay that individual's claim separately, we don't know what will happen in the next year. It could be higher, it could be lower. So, for that reason, Cheryl Morgan and we are recommending that we go ahead and stay with Symetra another year and accept that increase. We will have to transfer some money in to cover this in the new year. We didn't have enough budgeted, but we have the funds available to cover it.
And as I understand, from underspending and paid claims from last year?
Yes.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-133.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2014-04 for College View Sidewalk Rehab Project from J.C. Brewer Construction Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $337,719.78.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebbo.
A number of years ago, the City Commission went for a neighborhood stroll during the summer to this particular neighborhood and discovered that there was a sidewalk needed in that neighborhood. Based on that identification of need, staff work since that period of time, put together a strategy combining CBG money, what was known at one time as West Side Initiative money, as well as other funds that we had from Liquid Fuels. We went out to bid to put this, to put 2,800 feet of sidewalk gutter and curb into this neighborhood. We received three bids from that bid. J.C. Brewer was the lowest and best. Jeff is here to answer any questions you may have about this.
Yeah, if Mr. Lashley would come up and address the question I sent to him beforehand about the increased cost of the project that anticipated.
We did, on some line item, see an increase in cost. Two particular line items I pulled out to look at, in particular, larger commodity items, being the sidewalk and the curb and gutter. Both were a little bit higher. Keep in mind that 2,800 feet is a little bit longer than our typical sidewalk reconstruction contract, so this is a little bit bigger in scope. And, but at a unit price level, we are seeing some prices slightly higher.
You'd indicated some information in the email to me. Would you want to relate that to everybody?
Well, some, a couple of the contractors upon opening bids, they seemed to have plenty of work, and that could be an indicator of the increased prices, or it could just be an inflation that we're seeing. I feel like it's probably a combination of both.
Would you anticipate if we were to delay and perhaps re-bid this later in the building year, that we might get a better price?
It's a gamble. We could, we could come back and get higher prices.
Your recommendation is to go forward?
My recommendation is to go ahead with the order.
Would it be worth, at this point, to do some investigation with other projects to see if these commodities are, have these kind of increases, so we would know what we're facing going forward with the next project?
And what we do, we take historical prices, we use those to project. We did project a little bit more, but again, this was a little more than we had projected. We bid a lot of these items throughout the year, so we get some data points throughout the years, and that's how we use, that's one way we use that information to help us when we're estimating our projects. Getting more, we're going to be bidding some more stuff, we'll have more data points. Now, am I understanding you to canvas other?
Maybe canvas other communities to see if they're seeing the same kind of increases.
Yeah, we could do that. Again, I think this is a market condition that has caused this, and I feel like that's the, that's it. We could see prices come back down at a later time. Again, also keep in mind that this is a very large section of sidewalk. We had a lot of drainage in this project because...
That was going to be my next question, is the drainage would affect this?
The existing sidewalks are pretty well at grade. Cars can park over those and do quite often. You may not know that there's a sidewalk along portions of this. So, with our project, we'd be coming in, putting up curbs, elevating that, getting it off the road, but then when we're putting that curb, think about that as a dam that's set in the roadway. So, we have to make sure we have the drainage structures and piping to get the water off the road. There's a lot of drainage in this project as well.
And that's reflected in this price?
Yes, yes. So, those are other line items that went into this that wouldn't necessarily go in the typical sidewalk reconstruction project.
I'd just like to see us be prepared as well as we could to stretch our dollars as far as they can, so we can build more sidewalks.
Yeah, and looking at a couple of the line items, I should have run the percentages. They were increases, but they weren't double or anything like that. And I should have calculated that before, 10, 15% on those couple of line items that I did look at.
The only comment I have is it's good to see that the project's moving forward. It's desperately needed over there. The only other thing, and I know we have with some other projects, is there's going to have to be a little bit of a change in some of the parking behavior of the residents.
That's correct.
So, keep on top of that once the sidewalk is completed.
Yes.
Prepared to move forward then, rather than delay, thinking, okay. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-134.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting the purchase of two additional leaf collector machines under bid number 2014-11 from the American Road Machinery Company of Minerva, Ohio, in the total amount of $71,728.50.
So move. Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Williams. Excuse me.
I have a few more meetings for you.
Too many birthdays in here.
We're often fielding questions from new residents who come in our community. One of the things that are pleasantly surprised that here in Bowling Green, we still continue the age-old practice of picking up leaves, which is falling out of favor in some other communities because of cost. We make it a priority here. It's one of the best things we do, and I think it's the one that we're especially proud of. Last, this recent February, we authorized the purchase of two new leaf machines. The budget was passed last meeting, and we would like to replace the final two of our four, so we'd have all new machines, and we were smart enough, or Jeff was smart enough, to put into the bid package that we could piggyback off that old price. So, we're here tonight, since it's a priority, we need the equipment, and equipment takes a beating, so come this fall, we'll be able to do the service and do it well.
And the leaf program does, meets a lot of different needs. It not only keeps things out of landfill, it meets our stormwater requirements, as well as cleaning up the neighborhoods, too. Any other comments? Yes, Mayor?
I'd just like, even though it's early now, to remind the city, when it is leaf season, to do an educational video on where leaves need to be. And is it my understanding, so next year, there won't be a reason to buy more leaf collectors? We're okay for a few years?
No, this will get us in very good shape. The ones we've had, the frames were cracking. We were having to put a lot into the repairs, just to keep the stuff out on the road. This is going to get us in good shape for quite a while. These are good pieces of equipment, and they're going to meet our needs.
One of the reasons other cities stopped doing it, because the machines take a beating. It's a priority for us, so...
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-135.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting negotiations after sealed bidding for bid number 2014-13 for Small House Road and Highland Way signal improvements from Arrow Electric Company of Louisville, Kentucky, in the amount of $61,747.25.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbo.
As the Commission will remember, in this year's budget, we've allocated money to place another lane between Highland Avenue and Campbell Lane along Small House, which will help traffic there. The first part of that effort is involving a new signal there. We went out to bid for a signal. Both prices were over the amount we budgeted. We proceeded to negotiate, and we're here today to recommend, based on negotiations, that we can afford going with Arrow Electric Company of Louisville for $61,747. Jeff is here, if you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-136.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2014-37 for Panasonic CF31 Tough Books for the Police Department from ARC Acquisitions Incorporated of Austin, Texas, in the amount of $389,163.60.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebbo.
Almost all modern police cars have within them a computer that they use for information and for help fighting crime. We're here tonight to ask you to replace 120 of our MDCs that are approximately seven years old and starting to run into problems and support issues. The average price is about $3,200.
Go ahead. Sorry. Lynn Hartley is here, as well as Doug, if you have any questions. Comments or questions? And this price comes with preloaded software and operating systems as well, which makes the price. I'm sorry, we're picking on Joe's phone.
Joe's phone.
Did the doorbell thing over here.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe he was, maybe I misspoke a word or something.
No, we weren't making fun of your accent or anything.
I didn't say H-A-W-K-I-N-S, so I didn't...
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-137.
Municipal Order accepting donations. Donation from Southern Kentucky Soccer Club in the amount of $6,000 to assist with resprigging Bermuda grass at Lever's Lane Soccer Complex.
So move.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbo.
Last month, Little Brent outlined for the Commission the problems we're having at the Crosswinds Golf Course, as well as the soccer complex, with Bermuda grass being, having what is known as winter kill. We're on top of this. We are scheduled to replace those damaged areas, and our friends at Sky Soccer have been so gracious as to offer the city $6,000 to, of the $20,000 he'll take for the soccer complex on Lever's Lane. So, it takes the Commission's approval of their largesse, so we recommend you take the $6,000.
Any comments or questions?
I just think it's admirable of soccer folks to offer this money up and to help. It's a great thing. There's Little Brent, the 6'6" guy up there.
Yes, but Big Brent is the neighborhood guy, so we're talking about basketball and football here, so... Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-138.
Municipal Order approving amendments to the City of Bowling Green Financial Policies and Procedures.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbo.
As the Commission knows, the city recently had its bond rating improved through our financial practices, as well as our budget has received rewards for its presentation and value. None of that comes easily, and it's usually guided by a set of principles that this Commission and others before it have placed upon its staff. We're here tonight to amend some of those policies and procedures. Most of those are ministerial, few are material, but Jeff is here, if you have any questions about them.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-139.
Municipal Order approving a job development incentive program, employee withholdings, credit agreement with duty company.
So move.
Second.
I'm sorry. Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip.
In the budget message, we related to the Commission and to the people, over the last approximately decade or so, the city has incentivized over 1,600 jobs to, for private businesses in our community who are willing to create new jobs. Tonight, we're here again to add to that list. How it works is we, there's a 1.85% occupation tax that we all pay. Under this job development incentive chaired by Ms. Hill, we provide 1% rebate back to the companies, so they can get started, increase jobs. We do that for 10 years. Tonight, in this family of municipal orders, 13, 14, 15, 16, we're creating 10, 20, 80, and 18 new jobs, just tonight. And that'll add to the 1,600 we created over the last less than decade. So, we're ready to answer any question. Mrs. Hill can answer, if she would like, or give an overview.
Ms. Dunning?
Yes. One or two questions. This is no doubt one of the best programs that we have in attracting jobs to the community, and based on our financial structure in the City of Bowling Green, we're very dependent on jobs, and our occupational tax system that we have set up, that has been here since day one of this government, or this form of government. My question, I guess, that I have is this, and it is certainly not insinuate of being My question, I guess, that I have is this, and it is certainly not insinuate of being interpreted in any kind of way as saying anything is negative, but it is something that concerns me. Let's say one of the, Company A has 200 employees now. We give them this incentive along with the state of Kentucky. We group together our incentives for Company A. Company A presently has 200 employees. In this 10 years, or during this application process, they're going to increase their number of employees by 100, let's say in this particular example, they have 200. Who monitors Company A to make sure that in that 10-year period, they've got 300 employees?
I would feel more comfortable with Jeff Mizel providing an answer to, which is a very good question. We don't want to incentivize something that doesn't need incentivized. Jeff, can you give a great answer to that question?
The short answer is 99% of these incentives we're doing now are with a state incentive tied to them. So the state is monitoring all these, what they call Kentucky Business Investment Program incentives. So they watch these companies and before they even start the incentives, the company has to produce those 100 jobs you're talking about before any credits get taken. So they have to prove to the state that they've gone from 200 to 300. They show them the paperwork and then from that point on, the state monitors them every year, looks at their numbers, and we fall right behind them. So if the state, if they were to go into default with the state, we have that in all our agreements, they would automatically be in default with our agreement and the incentives would cease.
So there is no progression of quarterly reports, et cetera, during the 10-year period? In other words, once the 10th year and that month gets here, the state looks at where they at then versus where they were 10 years prior?
They're filing separate monthly withholding returns, both with the state and with the city, showing those new jobs that they produced, separate from their original base jobs of the 200 you were talking about. So we have what we call our regular withholding return and we have our JDI-F, our Job Development Incentive Fund account set up as a separate account where we can track whether or not they're meeting those new job projections. The state does the same thing.
What happens if Company A makes it five years, six years, and they go into some financial problems and they only have, they've only produced 25 employees during that five-year period?
We would, we would probably declare that they were in default of the agreement and withdraw it.
I want to back up one thing Jeff mentioned. Before they start getting a credit, they have to reach the 100. So they have to reach that point before they start getting a credit. Now, if they lose after that, that may be a different issue, but they don't get it until they reach their promised number. It doesn't start. We're approving these agreements tonight, I'll let Jeff jump in, but the effective dates of some of these agreements may not be for 12 months, 18 months.
Right. Like the Quiver one you'll see here in a minute, the big project up in the trans park, I think they've just now broke ground, so we're months and months away. But we wait until they produce the 80 jobs and we get a notification from the state before we'll start our incentive with them. We make sure it corresponds with the state's incentive.
So the 80 jobs may, are the individuals in this particular example that are opening the doors? In other words, you've answered all my questions.
I hope so.
Thank you, sir.
And just to follow up, we have pulled incentives before. Yes, just so you know, they do cease.
And I can add, even though we're providing an incentive, we also are creating new jobs and getting our own source of money. And after 10 years, hopefully the business is viable and we receive 100% of that money.
Yeah, we're getting 46% roughly from the start and once the 10-year period is up, we would get the 100%. .85 of the 1.85 is what we're getting for the next 10 years, which is, something is better than nothing.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Joe, good question. Please call or roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And in the same vein, municipal order 2014-140.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive program employee withholdings credit agreement with Holly Performance Products.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Williams, any further discussion? Please call or roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-141.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive program withholding employee, employee withholdings credit agreement with Quiver Ventures LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, any discussion? Please call or roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And municipal order 2014-142.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive program employee withholdings credit agreement with McDonald and Owen Vineyard and Lumber Company Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Denning?
Along the same line, I need to ask the question. Company is already in existence. They have 200 employees. They come to us under our program and they won't expand and they're going to add 100 employees. Who monitors that?
The state.
The 100 employees. They're going from 200 to 300 in a period of time. Who monitors whether or not they get those 100 employees?
The state and us.
No, no, no. They already in existence. Their first date program's over with. They're not under an incentive program with the state, but they're under an incentive program with us to expand.
We're together with the state. They are co-terminal together.
Yeah, how much I'm aware of any that we have that the state's not involved?
Well, let me re-ask the question. This company is already in existence.
Holly.
Holly, as an example, yes. But the state is not involved in any way. They come to our, our development firm and they want to do this or do that. My question is, who monitors whether or not they reach the number of employees?
We, the city would have to. We would look at their base employment, say of the 200 that they, that they already have existing. We wouldn't give them credit for any of those. We'd look at that starting base and make sure it grows from there to the projected number they give us.
And you're, we are doing that.
We get a separate withholding return that asks for the number of employees on it that we, we see and we watch.
Okay. And like Melinda mentioned earlier, if they do not reach that goal, then we can take whatever grounds we have to take.
We've had some go out of business.
Pardon?
The good thing is, is if, let's say they do go out of business, they're not going to have any employees withholding, so there's no way to get the credit. It's, you get it as you earn it. We're not upfronting any money. It's only as they earn it. So each month, they prove they have new employees and they have withholdings tied to those employees, that's when they earn their credit. Nothing in advance.
Good deal.
To add to the discussion, when the, they generally make application to the state through KEDF or the other organizations, but the state will not participate unless the city chooses to put skin in the game too by
That's right.
giving up some of its tax incentives. So it's a, it's a joint venture and I'm, you said we didn't have any individual city incentive programs going.
I don't think we have any left now.
I don't think so either. So we go, we walk, we walk that road together with the state. Any other discussion? Please call or roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-143.
Municipal order approving amendment to scope of services for grant agreement between Western Kentucky University and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet related to the construction of bikeway trails.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Hill, Mr. Fable.
Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, in addition to building roads, also tries to foment the development of bikeway, bike trails throughout the Commonwealth. Tonight, we're here to talk about our partnership with Western Kentucky University to extend that bikeway essentially from university to the river. We've been doing a joint planning with the university and as you'll remember, we had a show and tell maybe six months ago that changed the routing and increased more of that routing on city property. We're here tonight to petition the state to put more of the money into our part where it's being spent rather than in the university part. Mayor's being asked to submit some letters and assurances. Jeff Lashley is here to talk about the specifics of the project, if you would like.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Lashley? I think we talked about this on rerouting it earlier, or last summer.
Yeah.
Please call or roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2014-20.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.34 acre from RM3 multifamily residential to GB general business located at 1552 Parkhurst Drive, presently owned by T.O. Kladeak.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill to get it on the floor. Mr. Fable, I think we're going to
Mr. Hunter's here, if you have any questions?
We, I guess I'll, I'm the one causing trouble tonight, so I'll start off with the discussion. In reading the transcript and the evidence presented to us by the Planning Commission, it was a split vote, six to four, that this did pass. I will notice that three of the four city appointees who were present voted two to one against this motion. I'm looking at the, stop me if I'm going in the wrong direction, any of the three of you, but as I'm looking along the future land use, or existing land use and future land use map that's been presented, I don't know that I'm convinced that we're in compliance with the future land use map and that the presentation with the binding elements actually met the standard to make that correction. So reading the information, visiting the site to make sure that I had the right location in mind, I don't know that I'm, I never have voted against a recommendation from Planning and Zonings. This is a new experience for me, so I'm not sure that I'm ready to move forward on that. Does anybody else have a chance to review and read or go by the area, have comments?
Mayor, I went, I drove by and looked at the parcel in question and, you know, I'd really like to know what the proposed purpose for this is, since it's not in compliance with the, with the land use map as far as I can see. I just don't have anything to base an opinion that this needs to be rezoned.
That meets the standard of change in the future land use map.
Yep.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? How about telling us what to do from this point, Mr. City Attorney?
Let me give you a typical rezoning spiel. If you want to approve the recommendations of Planning Commission tonight, all you have to do is vote affirmatively for this ordinance and it's approved on first reading. What you cannot do is simply vote no on this ordinance and not do anything else. To override the recommendations of Planning Commission, you are required to make your own independent findings of fact and conclusions. You've got a variety of ways you can do that. If you choose to, you can have a whole new hearing.
No, thank you.
With new testimony, anything else, we've never done that in probably 25 years I've been doing this. Sometimes in the past, we have had a hearing, a new independent hearing based on arguments type of hearing where the parties come in, you know, may on each side or whatever, and make the argument based upon the record before the Planning Commission. We've done that in the past. But the last two or three, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that you've looked at this, the issue has been whether you want to conduct any type of independent hearing or not, because you also have the ability to make your own independent findings of fact and conclusions based upon the record before the Planning Commission, based upon a testimony there, based upon the binding elements they presented, based upon the testimony at the Planning Commission hearing, based upon the minutes that was provided to you, based upon the Planning Commission staff report. So if you feel comfortable that you have enough information on which to make your own independent findings of fact and conclusions that are contrary to those found by the Planning Commission, based upon the record that you have before you, you have the ability to do that. You don't have to hold a new hearing. You can, you can base your decision based upon the record before the Planning Commission.
I think I'm anxious to rehear the case. I think the evidence presented was, oh, well, it was insufficient, I think, to meet the standard of change for a future land use map amendment, but I'd be happy to hear from the applicant, but I understand he's not in town.
Yeah, I understand.
If we do do a denial, we would, would wait on the second reading, even if he's not back in town next time, to allow him to, to show up. I know the first reading really doesn't count anyway.
We have to do a second reading regardless, but my understanding is he's out of town for several days, so.
Okay.
And to go back to Commissioner Williams, if you, if you read the minutes, I think he was asked that question about proposed use and I think the Planning Commission had a difficult time getting the answer to that question as well.
Does anyone have any other comments before I make some winding up here? Okay, so if we vote to deny this, then ask Ms. Schaller to present a substitute ordinance to deny the rezoning and then we would go immediately into that at that point, is that correct?
Yes, if you, you can vote this one down, but if you do, then you have to turn around and immediately vote in favor of another one denying the rezoning with your own independent findings in it.
Okay. Just to give the commission the alert, I think that will be my intention. Obviously, you have all independently read the material and some of you have visited the property or had a chance to take a look at it, so.
So we have a motion in second on the floor for the president to approve the rezoning. So if we, if we vote it down, then I'll bring back a second motion to deny the rezoning and we'll start it over again there.
Okay.
All right, any other comments or questions? My vote will be no to deny the zoning. Please call or roll.
Williams?
No.
Denning?
No.
Hill?
No.
Waltrip?
No.
Wilkerson?
No.
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
If I can follow up with what you said earlier, I think in my years of being here on this body, or part of this body, I think this is probably the first time that I've ever voted against a planning and zoning recommendation. And there's certainly no reflection, as you've mentioned, pertaining to the fine people that are on the Planning and Zoning Commission, which I consider one of the toughest jobs in the City of Bowling Green and in county at Warren, nor is it any reflection on the staff of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think this is something that all of us have some concern about. I guess one of the things that really concerns me is a person not saying what they want to do when they're right up next to residential houses and it kind of bothers me from that perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I will move to, do I have to move to add this or just move as a directive?
Move to add, please.
Okay, I'll move to add substitute ordinance BG 2014-20A.
So moved, second.
Motion by Wilkerson, second by Denning. Any discussion on adding it to the agenda? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And now consideration of that said ordinance.
Ordinance denying rezoning of real estate, ordinance rejecting recommendations of the city-county Planning Commission and denying rezoning of a tract of land containing 0.34 acre from RM3 multifamily residential to GB general business located at 1552 Parkhurst Drive, presently owned by T.O. Kladeak.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Williams.
I do, if I can, will make one small correction in this order. First paragraph, which says the Planning Commission held their hearing on May 15th, they should have been June 5th.
June 5th.
It's June 5th, not May 15th. Yes, June 5th.
All right. And we'll again comment, the existing land use on three sides of that is residential. The building itself is residential and there's a parking lot from its own business between it and the businesses that are facing Old Morgan Town Road. So this is commercial development creeping up into the Parkhurst, is it Parkhurst? Is it right? Parkhurst neighborhood. And I've made this motion based on, do I need to read these? Mr. Moore? Do I need to read these items?
I don't think you need to read them. We're ready, but I think if you look through the records, you touch on the subject.
Okay. So I'm going to summarize, I'm going to go ahead and read it then. This property has a zoning classification of R3 until 2001, when during the classification it was rezoned to RM3. The surrounding area consists primarily of single-family residential units with some commercial, multifamily, residential, and public and public institutional uses in the area. commercial multifamily residential and public and public institutional uses in the area. The future land use map designate this property as moderate family residential. While the applicant agreed to a number of binding elements, these binding elements are not sufficient to bring the proposed use into compatibility with the surrounding area. And because the proposed rezoning is not in compliance with the future land use map and is not compatible with the sounding area, surrounding area, it is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Did I cover the detail?
You did, but I think that I, the first that firms this is item number three, requires moderate family residential.
Modern density, modern density family, but residential. Did you get that, Kate?
Uh huh.
You got all of that, Kate?
Uh huh.
So again, we will, presuming this ordinance denying the rezoning of real estate passes, we will hold off on the second reading-
Well, that's why I was called.
-to give an opportunity to notify the property owner that there's been a hiccup and he may want to attend next time.
But there is a 90-day period from June 5th. That's why I want to make sure he realizes June 5th, because you have 90 days from that date to take action. If you don't take action within 90 days, then the rezoning is approved.
Understand. Any other comments or questions regarding this ordinance?
Maybe not specifically this one, but I know that all of us have and just within last week heard from a couple of people who are really concerned about encroachment into our single-family residential neighborhoods. So again, I think this is on a lot of people's minds, not just in this area, but in a lot of places in Bowling Green.
Yes, sir. Any other comments? So a yes vote will be to deny the rezoning, which was my intent in making this-
Did you vote on BG 2014-20A?
I, I lost you there. Say it again. What did you say?
I said, yeah, I make sure if I understand, now you are voting on ordinance BG 2014-20A.
Yes, which is, which is deny, deny the rezoning. And again, it does, it's a second reading that counts on this, so. Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Yes is no.
Want to make sure I started that ball rolling down the right path.
All right, first reading of ordinance BG 2014-21.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing 26.24 acres of property located at the intersection of Mount Victor Lane and Old Lover's Lane with property presently owned by Browning Investors LLP and O.L. Avery Jr. and said territory being contiguous to existing city limits.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Hill, Mr. DeFabo.
Steve Hunter is here, if you have any questions about this particular, this board.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Hunter? Bring any more in while you're, while you're over that way? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order, or excuse me, this is resolution BG, our joint resolution with the city and the county, BG WCCA 56.
A resolution of the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, section of the Bowling Green, Warren County Cable Franchise Authority approving the transfer of control of the franchise agreement from Time Warner Cable Incorporated to Comcast Corporation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denning and second by Hill, Mr. DeFabo.
With the commission's courtesy, I'd like for Gene Harmon to address this, please.
I think doesn't appear that Time Warner was here very long. It seemed like we already had them at all, but-
They've been here too long.
Well, we won't say that. At least I won't say that. I think we've discussed before about the, the letter the mayor got back in May and it's been all the news everywhere else that Time Warner now is being acquired by Comcast. So back in April, the city and Warren County, since they were joint authority, received a letter notifying the city and the county of that acquisition. By federal law and by ordinance, our franchise agreement, we are required to, to approve that, that transfer. We had 120 days from, from April to do it. We, Amy and I talked two, three times. We saw no basis on which we could, we could deny it, as long as the existing franchisee was in, you know, substantial compliance with the franchise agreement, as long as the new company has the financial and technical capability to operate the system. This one is unique, you know, probably in, in the past, we were done maybe a public hearing or something else, but as everybody, everybody was hearing, that Comcast really was not going to be our cable company. And sure enough, a couple of weeks ago, we now have a letter from Comcast requesting transfer of this franchise to them for charter. I'm not sure how you transfer a franchise agreement that you don't have, but we, we are approving the transfer to Comcast tonight. Contingent, I did add language, contingent upon approval of the federal government because the FCC is reviewing this as well, because this is a pretty big merger between two cable companies. And Department of Justice may be looking at this one as well, too, which is probably, everybody speculates, one of the reasons why now that Comcast may be reselling or reassigning some of their franchise agreements around the country to try to get a little bit more favorable attention from the FCC. But anyway, tonight, we're here simply to approve the transfer to Comcast. Actually, we didn't see a need to have public hearings, anything else. I'm not sure Comcast would have come, because they knew they weren't going to be here long. And so we want a whole lot of need to have a whole lot of discussions with representatives of Comcast. We're here to do this one, probably within, I don't know, 60, 90 days or so, we'll probably be back with, with another resolution approving the one from, from Comcast to charter.
And this is just a two-year, and this is just a two-year extension? The last time, didn't we just do a short-term extension?
Well, yeah, that's a separate issue. This one is the actual transfer. This franchise does expire on December 31st of this year. We have two more years that we can extend it. After that, we gaggle back out on, on the franchise, because we're limited by 20 years. So we have two more years. So we'll probably sometime in the next 60, 90, 120 days be back, at least discussion with you, the, a two-year extension as well. Those are two separate issues.
And if I might, one thing that we want to make sure that everybody understands is that when we talk about a franchise agreement, it is a non-exclusive franchise agreement. It's operating, it's an operating agreement, basically. And it sets minimum standards of, of compliance and service, but there's nothing preventing another company, should they so desire, to meet the same operating conditions to come in here and operate a competing cable company. So us, us doing this with any company is not prohibiting someone else from coming in.
Yeah, franchise basically gives them the ability to operate in our rights away. So if any, and Rick is right, any other company wants to, come to us and we'll let you do it.
Any other comments or questions?
I think I'd probably be remiss and all of us have been subjected to a vast number of people that are dissatisfied with our present cable situation. I appreciate Rick saying what he did then, but I would hope that whoever we end up with addresses some of the issues that our citizens are having with this cable system. It's, it, it's not a good way for, for Time Warner to have done business and I just hope that somehow we get some resolution with some of the issues that our citizens are having.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-144.
Municipal order approving memorandum of agreement between the city of Bowling Green and the Department of the Army related to the initial water supply relocation storage study at Barren River Lake.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Hill, Mr. DeFabo.
As most of our residents know, the city folk receive their water supply from the Barren River provided by BGMU. BGMU is always trying to do a better job and one of the jobs he did back in 2003 was to undertake a study to see what we can do during times of emergency. And that study revealed that maybe the cheapest and the best solution would be to have the Army Corps of Engineers release more water from the dam. The Army Corps of Engineers, years later, are now saying that that might be a good idea and let's study that. And Mark has gone out and found money to now officially pay for a verifying study. That requires this commission to enter into an agreement with the Corps as part of the requirement. If I didn't explain that well, Mark Iverson is here, if you have any other questions.
Only took 11 years for him to get around to working with this on. Might take that long to get the study done, I don't know. I'm sorry.
I was in a, a couple of weeks ago, was on vacation at a, at a city and the water quality was terrible. I mean, I just commend Mark, you and people at BGMU that we have the quality that we have. It was just awful, the whole, the whole week.
Did you drink your beer?
One glass, or one drink. It was awful. But again, sometimes I think we take this for granted, but thank you for what you all do to get us the quality of water that we have.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
That's the last item on the agenda. We'll be going into closed session and we'll have a vote coming out, Kate.
A vote, sorry.
Thank you for attending, yeah. Okay, we return to open session after an executive session to add municipal order 2014-145 to the agenda. So I'll entertain a motion to add it to the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Hill, and the vote is to add this item to the agenda. Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And now consideration of municipal order 2014-145.
Municipal order approving settlement agreement involving civil action against Downtown Redevelopment Authority Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFabo.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As we all know, the city has been engaged mutually with a legal dispute between the city and the Downtown Redevelopment Authority. With the help of Judge Steve Wilson, the parties yesterday were able to reach a tentative agreement to settle the claim. The agreement is attached to the municipal order and if you would like, our attorney could outline that or just provide a copy-
For the public's benefit, I'm sure they're interested if you could hit the major points of the agreement, please, sir.
The major points that everybody that recalls this dispute involve about 9,000 square feet.
Gina, you need your microphone.
Anyways, everybody recalls this involves about 9,000 square feet of land in Circus Square Park. There's a dispute between the city and DRA over the ownership and control of that land. Intermediation yesterday, we were able to reach a resolution to that. The main points of that is that DRA will convey most of that land. We did agree that the new property line would be about a foot past the concrete patio and at the end, is that the east end of, of the building there at 601 State? The line will go through the middle of the parking lot, on the State Street side of the parking lot. There was also an issue, a question, really, I guess, about, and something we approved a few weeks ago. We approved an emergency exit door off of Heritage Trail. That agreement we did a few weeks ago is kind of year-to-year lease, year-to-year permit conditioned upon them needing it and some other stuff. We have agreed that we will do a permanent easement or whatever we need to do to make that a permanent emergency exit door. It still would remain an emergency exit, it would be an emergency exit door. In exchange for, for those items, the city has agreed to, to pay DRA $150,000. So that will be the purchase price of this land and with the other conditions as opposed to. So that's the major issues, unless I've missed something else.
That's it. Are there any comments or questions? Again, we want to thank Judge Steve Wilson, who worked very hard to resolve this issue with us and unless there's any other comments, please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.